You ought to crash here, you're like Putin.
That's right, I give votes like Putin.
Everybody's too afraid to even run against ya. You see what Kevin Smith doing with that stupid thing?
Yeah.
And unbelievable.
Please come to council and report it on.
It's being presented at the, uh, in Beijing.
Okay, one minute.
What?
Opening up a consultant.
Who's that?
Political consultant.
Are you mad at me?
He is.
Are you mad at me?
Oh Sam, I forgot, I'll send that, I forgot.
I can't even read.
You know I'm not mad at ya.
I know.
Only if you dislocate your hips.
You know.
Go get citizens' action against me.
Oh, they're here for us.
So, as you know. One minute, John. Really? You record?
Yeah.
Good evening, it's Monday, May 11th, uh, 2015, common council meeting has begun. Our invocation tonight will be by Karen White.
I miss everyone to please bow your heads. Have we followed, we come before you today, we thank you for this day. We ask that you guide the work of the South Bend Common Council. We ask that, that we give, uh, thought to what we have been charged to do, and that we keep the needs of our citizens at the most, uh, priority that we have for our city. We pray, uh, we pray for, uh, the unrest that's in our nation, within our state, and we also pray for the fallen officers. We ask that you guide our work and that we do everything that's decent and in order for our city, in Christ Jesus' name and there.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Vorty, could you please read the roll?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Henry Davis, MIA. Uh, Ms. Shea?
Here.
Dr. Ferlick?
Here.
Dr. Varner?
Present.
Uh, Oliver Davis is absent, uh, Vice President Dieter is absent. Mr. Ferlick?
Yep.
Councilmember White?
Present.
And President Tim Scott?
Present.
Sticks?
Present.
Thank you. Report for the Subcommittee on Minutes?
Uh, to the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the April 13th and April 27th, 2015 meeting of the council. Follow them to be correct, therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott, David Varner.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Um, under special business, if I could ask if everybody turned your cellphones to silent at this point, please. Um, next council meeting will be Tuesday, May 26th, that's the day after Memorial Day. And also, we're taking applications for the Human Rights Commission. Um, the deadline will be May 26th on Tuesday as well, we have a council position to fill. Um, just a couple quick announcements, if you're here, regarding tax abatement 1531, 1532, and 1533, and Resolution 1535 regarding, uh, employment opportunities for youth. All those tax abatements and the resolution are continued to May 26th, as well as ordinance 2215 regarding tall grass is continued to May 26th. With that, uh, there's no report from city offices. Catherine Roos is in the audience representing the administration. So, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to resolve in committee hall.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would like to call the committee to the hall, the committee of the hall to order, the committee of the hall is the, is where the common council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public hearing on the bill. The chairperson announced the committee's advisory recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from area plan staff member will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who will give a formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposed ordinance, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee's chairperson's advisory recommendation update. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask the person giving the formal presentation questions only, with all other council statements or comments being held during the council portion. At this time, uh, we do ask, as the president has asked, that you, if you have any electronic devices, to put them in a silent mode, so that the business that is before us can be conducted without any distractions. At this time, I would like to ask city clerk John Vorty to give second reading to public, to bill 09-15.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1221 Miami Street, Councilmanic District 3, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, is there a committee report from ZNA? Ms. Shea?
Well, that's right, I was the, uh, acting person, there is no recommendation, uh, on this bill.
And that was due to lack of court?
Yes.
At this time, is there a presentation from Area Plan?
Yes.
We ask you to state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name's Matthew Chapias from the Area Plan Commission with offices located on the 11th floor of this building. This is a home, uh, on Miami Street, near the intersection of Miami and Lincoln Way East. Petitioner is requesting a zone change to downzone around MF1, Irving Corridor, multifamily district, to SF2, single family, two-family district, to allow for a single-family home. The house is the White House on the right. There is no site plan with this rezoning, this downzoning to residential does not require one. Uh, a letter was received in remonstrance, uh, to this, uh, to this petition by an adjacent property owner, but after speaking with that, uh, with the letter writer, uh, it was made clear that they were only, uh, in opposition because they were the, under the impression that their property was also going to be rezoned, which was not the case. Uh, after explaining that to them, they removed their, uh, remonstrance. The Area Plan Commission sends this to you with a favorable recommendation, and I can answer any questions of this.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions from Area Plan? Thank you for your presentation. We'll now move to the petitioner. We do ask that you come before the council, state your name and address, and give us a brief summary in regards to bill 09-15.
Yes, my name is Mohammed Rasool. Uh, I, my address is the 55, 566 Labrador Point Court, Posiola. I'm here for 1221 Miami Street, South Bend. It's an investment property, we, uh, it was a, uh, multiple family, we convert to single family, and we found a buyer, went to buy, it's a single-family accident, and the lender required to, need to be changed, the zoning, so that's why I'm here to, because we're changing the zoning change.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions of the petitioner?
No.
Thank you for your presentation, we'll now move to the public hearing portion, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of bill 09-15? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one, the public hearing portion is closed, council, what is your pleasure?
We'll move to send, uh, 09-15 to the full council favorably.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, I hear you both?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill 09-15 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Mr. Vorty, will you please give second reading to bill 16-15?
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 416 Western Avenue and 501 West South Street, Councilmanic District Number 2, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Is there a committee report? Ms. Shea?
This, uh, also was subject to a lack of a form, and sent to the council with no recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a report from Area Plan?
Good evening, Angela Smith from the Area Plan Commission, office is on the 11th floor of this building. Um, this is a portion of 416 Field at Kowalski Park. The property, it is highlighted, the portion of the property that is seeking the rezoning this evening. Again, here you can see it in the perspective to kind of get an idea, it includes the parking lot, um, and the store, as well as a portion of the current stadium. They're rezoning from GB General Business and MU Mixed Use to CBD Central Business District, to be consistent with the remainder of the development. Again, this is a portion of the site plan, this, they're not, they don't need to rezone the entire site because the majority of the sites are already in compliance with the zoning district that they would like to have, they're only re, seeking to rezone the small portion. Uh, this comes to you from the Area Plan Commission with a favorable recommendation, the city continues to support the development and redevelopment of downtown properties, and zoning these properties in the same zoning classification as the surrounding properties will encourage compatible development opportunities.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Dangus?
Sure, could you go back to that map, please?
Sure.
So, we can look directly at the place that we're discussing to be rezoned?
The area highlighted in red with a crosshatch, it's, uh, currently blue, and then there's one that's lighter green, that's the portion of the site to be rezoned. Those are the only two portions of the site that do not currently match the Central Business District. There are leftover zoning districts, from one, I believe it was Gates and a couple other businesses down there.
Okay, I'm sorry, but this street right here is, that's my street, this is...
That's Taylor.
This is where the baseball stadium is at?
No, the baseball stadium's the green, right? So, you're right.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, right, but this is where the, um, the pride housing is at, right?
Correct.
And we're changing that from general business district to...
There's the portion, the, the red outline with the crosshatch, just north of the baseball stadium?
Right.
That is the portion that will be zoned, rezoned, that is currently zoned at GB General Business District, and MU Mixed Use. They're just seeking to rezone that to CB Central Business District, sorry, CB Central Business District, so that the entire development is all under one zoning just, jurisdiction. This will give them the ability to, um, develop the property, look at it as a whole.
Okay, I'm cleared out. Well, three years ago, I, I was going back through my mind, I was, we had a conversation with, um... We had a conversation with the church that was over in that area, not directly there, but the church that was in that area, I think it was Zion Hill, um, and there was some concerns about the entire area being rezoned in such a way that the church and some of the other, uh, businesses that are in the area, such as Hope Rescue Mission, that the area will become, um, like a Wrigleyville, where they wouldn't be able to exist and do the same that they've been doing for a number of years. Is that conversation still ongoing?
Um, not that I'm aware of, this is just a portion that's currently owned by the Parks Department and, uh, the redevelopment, they're not, as far as I know, there's not discussion about rezoning any property outside of that.
Well, there was, this was a part of a plan before, I guess, you got this, I go back again like four years ago, this is nothing new to me, this is, this since I've been on council. So, the dangers of rezoning could impact people who are already there. So, again, my question is, is that, are there any other conversations to be had, or going to be had, when considering changes of the land zoning that may affect people who are already there? And if not, then I think that it will be who was not to participate in those conversations because they were ongoing, obviously there was an election, a new mayor comes in, and we can't mi, act like they don't exist.
Again, I'm not aware of anything, as part of the normal zoning process, everybody within 300 feet of the, the zoned area, the area to be rezoned, is notified, they also publish in the newspaper, and they provide, um, public notification signs on the property. Uh, it's, the only portion that is seeking to rezone this evening is the portion that's currently owned by the city.
Ma'am, I got that, and thank you so much, I get that you're limited in, the things that's happened, so...
There's just nothing else going on at this point that I'm aware of.
Right, so is there anybody here that can answer that question?
Good evening, Chris Fielding, 14th floor, Department of Community Investment. Um, the reason why we're doing this rezoning is originally this was, a myriad of different parcels originally owned by Gates, up until about 60 days ago, this was actually broken into 15 individual parcels, some of them actually had different zoning classifications within the, the layout. Uh, so what we've done is, to answer your question, what we're doing is rezoning this to CBD, and it will be the exact same zoning classification that the land where the church currently sits now. So, actually, this will be contiguous to their land, and have the exact same zoning classification as the church currently has, and the Hope Rescue Mission. So, actually, taking the mixed use off of it opens it up to the same zoning as the rest of the downtown.
Sir, I got that.
Okay.
We don't make zoning changes just for giggles. There obviously is a plan in place to develop and to offer development in. My conversation again, my question again, based upon zoning, zoning laws, are we in conversation with those who are affected by this, about what's going to happen in the next four to five years? I'm not asking you to repeat the process, I get the process, I've been here for 10 years.
Yes.
Okay, so, the conversation again, is that the atmosphere is wanting to continue to fit and be conducive for those that are in that area, that's my conversation, or is it going to be so much of a, of a development that it's going to sort of force them out?
No, I would say it would actually be more conducive, certainly any development around the cove would require parking, additional parking, which currently, especially the church, as you see, to just to the east of the cove, currently has zero parking except for on-street parking, so the addition of any development with more parking would certainly help that.
You know, this is second district, this is what I can ride on, it's really hard, I would be more comfortable, and this may not be the pleasure of the council, that, because we had an enormous time spent on development in that area, uh, from point A to point B, from down to Z, to make sure that there is an actual, um, an understanding of what Wrigleyville's going to look like in five years downtown South Bend. I don't know if that slows this process down of zoning, or, or it's based upon next conversations for approval, but I'm not comfortable with voting for a zoning change, given the amount of conversation that took place prior to you guys even being employed by South Bend, because there's background there, and they may not understand exactly what's going on, that's why we were there with them, but I'm more interested in finding out if they are really understanding of what the next steps are going to be.
Didn't you explain this this afternoon at the committee meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
What is that they're doing, then?
I would say that, um, in terms of councilmember Davis, uh, concerns, that if I, you know, I'm hearing correctly, those, the church, and I think the church is only, uh, uh, building their standing in that area, we used to have the locksmith, and they're gone, they're gone. So, I do recall having a conversation, as we move forward, that the church would be somewhat grandfather, and that it would not lose its standing or its location. So, somehow, there's a need to have that, um, um, sense that that is still in place.
Absolutely, we, right now, we have...
That we found that in writing to mom, so that when we look at this particular...
Right now, we have no formal development on, on the books or even being proposed, what we're trying to be, do is be proactive, so that when a developer does come, we don't have to wade through a four to six month process while they wait and we potentially lose an investor.
But would the church still be safeguarded in this?
Absolutely, yeah, you now need to perform...
The church received notification, they're within the 300-foot radius also. Okay. And did you get anyone to respond to this, uh, bill before us?
We did not have anyone, uh, present at the Area Plan Commission meeting, nor did we receive any, uh, calls or recommendations.
I would like to ask our, our council attorney, as we move forward looking at this, and I do recall that conversation with the church, uh, that somehow could this be put in, that there's understanding that any development that would move forward would not have a negative impact on the church? I don't know, I just need to have that sense of comfort.
That doesn't fall within a written commitment.
Okay, okay.
Uh, all that they're trying to do is, again, is, is the report from Area Plan states is to have it as a compatible development opportunity. Uh, if there is going to be a subsequent change, again, they would go through a similar process like this, especially with regards to the parking.
So, we'd have to come back to the council?
Yes. However, this is all public record now, this would be a part of the record that would be maintained in Mr. Vorty's office. Uh, you have requested perhaps an additional letter, communication between the Community Investment, uh, Department to the council?
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move to, um, the petitioner. I would ask that you state your name and address, please.
Chris Fielding, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor, on the county city building.
Okay, will you give us a brief summary?
Sure. So, what we're trying to accomplish here is to clean up what's probably been at least a decade old, um, just a menagerie of different zoning types, as you can see, also, we have 15 different lots within, um, one parcel, it was, it was owned by Parks for some time, it's now owned by the Development Commission, we've gone through the replating process, which took about 60 days, it's now one large parcel outside of, uh, what commonly is known as Left Field along Western, um, what we're trying to do in between the cul-de-sac there, and behind the synagogue over to the walkway, is just have the same zoning, have the contiguous zoning classifications from the rest of the downtown and the rest of that block.
And now, we move to the public hearing portion, if there's anyone, anyone from the public wishing to speak in support of bill 16-15? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one, councilmembers, what is your pleasure?
Move to send 16-15 to the full council favorably.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, prior to taking a vote, I would want the record to show that the concerns that were expressed, especially as it pertains to the church, that there will be part of the record.
Sheriff Truman?
Yes.
Before you go to the vote, um, I'm not trying to stand in front of development, but I just, for the life of me, can't believe that we've gone through all those changes from park to park to redevelopment, and this is just as benign, or just, uh, a change in, in just in, in notes, if we're not doing anything. I am more comfortable, again, like I said earlier, that there is a, a larger conversation with the land, the landowners in that area, again, because everyone does not understand zoning. I'm sure many of us are lax on some of the laws of zoning as councilmembers. I just don't want to see us run into a, a brick wall in the next three years, which is issue.
There's a motion and, uh, second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries, what I would like to recommend before I, uh, uh, ask for a motion to rise a report to the committee, to the council as a whole, uh, would like to have a motion regarding bill 22-15.
Some, uh, uh, motion to continue 22-15?
As a second?
May 26th, and send it back to the, uh, Health and Public Safety Committee?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion carries, would like to, uh, have as a record, and I don't know which committee that this would come under, but discussion regarding, uh, any planning for that particular area, and that, um, individuals that would be impacted, that we have a conversation. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to rise a report to the common council.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Full council is now back in session, uh, bill's third reading, John Vorty, would you please read 09-15?
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1221 Miami Street, Councilmanic District Number 2, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Look at the passage of 09-15.
Second.
Over the roll. Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Vorty, 16-15.
Third reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 416 Western Avenue and 501 West South Street, Councilmanic District 2, with the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Move for passing?
Second. Mr. Vorty? The roll, Ms. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mr. Henry Davis?
Nay.
And President Scott?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
Onto resolutions. This is the portion of the council meeting where common council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the city clerk. A report from the committee chair of the standing committee, which the bill was referred to and for advisory, advisory review and recommendation is given. If a proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exemption, a report from a building department will first be given, followed by the petitioner, who has the formal presentation at the podium. If a proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from the city's Community Investment Department will be given, followed by the petitioner giving a formal presentation at the podium. On all other proposed resolutions, the formal presentation by the petitioner will be given immediately after the committee person, chairperson's report. Following the formal presentation, council members will ask preliminary questions only, with other council comments being heard during the council portion. During the public portion of each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name and address, and comments on the bill. If you have questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes for those speaking in favor going first, followed by an in-opposition and five-minute rebuttal period to the presenter to the bill. John Vorty, would you please read 1530?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 3702 West Sample, South Bend, Indiana, 46619, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Cruck Electric LLC.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investment sends this forward favorably.
Okay, is there a presentation? State your name and address for the, correct, please.
Good evening, community, uh, community members, my name is Jacob Alexander, I'm with the Department of Community Investment, located here in the county city building on the 14th floor. Uh, I'm presenting a personal, um, personal property abatement for Cruck Electric, uh, which is a, a vast wire farm, which is a subsidiary DBA of Cruck Electric LLC. Uh, a vast wire farm, they manufacture springs and wire farms for medical and brake industries. Uh, they are located, and they are a locally owned business located in the Supple Street Business Complex, and have been there for the past 12 years. Uh, they currently employ four full-time and two part-time employees. Uh, due to steady growth in demand over the past couple of years, Cruck Electric requires additional equipment to expand production, uh, production capabilities in current and future demand. With the addition of new equipment, Cruck Electric... With the addition of new equipment, Cruck Electric would be able to continue as a contributing business to the community. Um, $175,000, um, a private investment to purchase a new wire farm machine. New project tax, uh, would be $15,012 over five years. Estimated tax, uh, being abated during a five-year period, $6,881. Uh, total tax to be paid on the new equipment over the, over, uh, the five years would be $8,131. Um, at this moment, at this time, I'd like to call the petitioner, uh, Mr. Dan Cruck, to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cruck, would you state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My name is, uh, Daniel Cruck. Uh, my business address is 3702 West Sample Street. Um, as we, uh, as Jacob, uh, covered, we're, uh, increasing our production capability here in South Bend, uh, hopefully in the future, uh, with our, uh, increase in machinery, hopefully we can, uh, have an increase in, uh, employees in, in the city, and, uh, that's basically why we're asking for the abatement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council at this point? Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Uh, this is for, um, not the petitioner, but the presenter, uh, Jacob. Sir, do you guys, um, this particular business is in the urban enterprise zone? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. But, uh, by it being an urban enterprise zone, does this particular business receive other incentives as well to expand or to grow? I haven't seen very many businesses and urban enterprises, you know, come in and, and get an abatement. I'm not against it. I'm not saying that, but I'm-
Right. Both will answer your question and have-
I have never seen too many businesses at all actually built, that come in that are a part of Sample Street Business Complex, or even in its own, uh, to receive an abatement. So my question is, the, the incentive package that this business is getting, um, that's contributing to their growth, what is it? Cause it's abatement and also urban enterprise zone money.
So, the last part regarding the incentives for his business to grow, what's the purpose of it?
No, no, sir. My question is, is that what other incentives are being used to help support the growth of this business?
For this particular business?
You have a tax- You didn't answer, so I'm gonna repeat it to you, sir. The first question, can you hear me now, this is better?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The first question is, is that this business is an urban enterprise zone?
Correct.
That means that there are incentives that are built to help support this business growth. I also said I was not against the business, but I would like to know what the incentive package is along with this abatement that we're getting ready to, uh, vote on.
For this particular business, the only incentive package he, he's receiving is this tax abatement?
So there's no other dollars that are coming from the urban enterprise zone that's helping supporting his business?
No, sir.
If I could, I, I-
Please.
If I, I think the urban enterprise zone is a geographic area which is permitted to collect its, or keep the taxes that it receives for use in the area, but I don't think they offer benefits. Now, maybe they do some rolling-
Well, I think the building itself is within the enterprise zone. And the building itself provides low to no cost rent as well for businesses. But I would want to ask if there's any more further information that we should be concerned about when delivering tax abatements that's on top, because these are red examples that the city can use to help develop other businesses in the UAE. So that's why, or urban enterprise zone. There's nothing against this guy, or this gentleman, or this business owner. It's for purposes of, of better communication and, and developing businesses in South Bend, especially in those areas.
And I too. Chris Fielding, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. Um, when it comes to the credits that are available through the urban enterprise zone, especially for smaller businesses, the reason why you don't see too many businesses take advantage of it is because of the amount of paperwork that's required to file for those credits. Most businesses, if you're a small business, for four to 20 employees, it costs more to file the paperwork than you would to actually see through the benefit. The only other benefit or pot of funding that may be available would actually be through the Urban Enterprise Association, and typically, we do not bring businesses before the Urban Enterprise Association, because they really do so much more for community growth, let alone business growth. So what we utilize typically is either tip investment or tax abatement. So with urban enterprise zone, literally goes all the way from Ignition Park, past Sample Street Business Complex. So the tax abatements that you all have approved include lipper components, underground pipe and valve, road and brick fuel, um, Hummer Rayco, thermal light windows. So, uh, the multi-tenant campus in Ignition Park, so there's probably a dozen abatements within the urban enterprise zone, um, and none of those have received any funding from the Urban Enterprise Association.
Including this business that we're talking about right now?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the petitioner or the presenter? With that? Nope? Okay. We'll turn it over to the public portion. Thank you. Anybody from the public wishing to speak in favor of 1530, please come to the podium? Anyone speaking in favor of 1530? Seeing none, anybody wishing to speak against 1530, please come to the podium? Seeing none, bring it back to council?
For the adoption of 1530?
Second.
Mr. Vorty?
Uh, Dr. Furlough?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furlough?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Do we need motions on all the resolutions?
Uh, you can do motions for 1531, 1532, and 1533 together.
Motion to continue 1531, 1532, and 1533 to-
Second.
May 26th.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Mr. Vorty, 1534?
A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, recommending that public input be encouraged to be received on a suggested additional street location to be considered to be renamed in honor of the late Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. in South Bend, Indiana.
We have presenters. Mr. Davis?
I would like to ask Councilmember Henry Davis to come and join me at the podium regarding Bill 15-34. I will give some opening comments. My name is Karen White, and I live at 1912 Melphorn Way here in South Bend, Indiana. Joining me is Councilmember Henry Davis.
State your name and-
Councilmember Henry Davis Jr., City of South Bend, Second District, 5117, Ottawa Drive, South Bend, Indiana, 46619.
What we have before you, and Councilmember Davis will actually read the resolution. I will give opening comments, just to give a background in regards to why we're here as a council at this particular time, and then we'll also ask, um, a representative from the city administration to really, um, outline some of the information that has gone before the community in regards to the process. A resolution on, on a process to consider renaming an additional street to honor Martin Luther King Jr. At the May 14, 2012 meeting of the Common Council and Economic Committee, Mr. Hugh E. P. Scobie addressed the committee. The committee meeting minutes noted that he presented the following information. To name a prominent roadway, he suggested at that time Lincoln Way West in honor of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Currently, the inner belt from West Washington to Lincoln Way West carries the MLK designation. This street portion has no addresses and is seen by Mr. Scobie and others as a slight to Dr. King. On December 13, 2013, a frustration walk requesting a more adequate location to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive was held, with the update being sent to interim Mayor, Mayor, uh, Mark Neal and the Board of Public Works. Several members of the South Bend community has also addressed this topic over the past several months at the common council meetings during the privilege of the floor. In the interest of having public input on this very important topic, the tax resolution is filed aimed at establishing a process for all city residents and business owners operating in the city of South Bend to make recommendations on a potential additional street to be renamed, establishing a reasonable time period for the public to participate, establishing a process which is transparent, and then recommending that the Board of Public Works meet at reasonable time and location so that the public having the opportunity to participate. At this time, Councilmember Henry Davis will read into the record, the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. White.
I have it.
Whereas the common council of City of South Bend, Indiana recognizes that almost a thousand communities across the great country have renamed public streets in honor of the late Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. as depicted in the following map that's within our, uh, packet. Whereas the current law sets forth in Indiana Code 36-7-4-405, provides that the streets shall be named or re, or renamed so that their names are easy to understand and to avoid duplication or conflict with any other names. And whereas currently, the Board of Public Works has to control the supervision of the streets within the city pursuant to South Bend Municipal Code 18-2, and has a regular reviewing request for a change of street name on a case-by-case basis, and whereas currently, approval of the changing the name of the street requires a proper Board of Public Works resolution, which notes among other things the location of the street under consideration. The requesting party and that the change in name requests, excuse me, requested would not adversely affect the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of the city of South Bend, and whereas upon adoption of such a resolution of the Board of Public Works, the clerk of the board then notifies the following entities: Area Plan Commission, Building Department, AT&amp;T, US Post Office, St. Joseph County Circuit Court Clerk, South Bend Community School Corporation, St. Joseph County Assessors Office, St. Joseph County Auditor's Office, St. Joseph County GIS Department, Department of Administration and Finance, Community Investment Department, Mayor's Office, Common Council, Fire Department, Police Department, Law Enforcement, Division of Engineering, Bureau Streets, Division of Traffic and Lighting, Parking and Recreation Department, Solid Waste, Water Works, Waste Water Treatment, and, just say everybody. Whereas, the South Bend Common Council notes that the, that currently Dr. Martin Luther King Drive is located north of Washington Street and extends north to Lincoln Way West in the city of South Bend, and whereas the South Bend Common Council believes that the public shall be involved in a meaningful process to recommend renaming an additional street in the city of South Bend to honor and remember the civil rights leader Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore, that will be resolved by the Common Council of City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1, South Bend Common Council recommends that a seven-member advisory street renaming committee be established, which would be composed of the residents of the city of South Bend, with four individuals being appointed by the common council and three individuals being appointed by the mayor. Section 2, the advisory street rema, renaming committee will be charged with overseeing the process in which invites residents and business owners into the city of South Bend to recommend a current street for the consideration to rename to the honor of the rate, the late Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. by the Board of Public Works, such as a process would. Number 1, encourage public participation for submission of streets to be considered over a 30-day period. Number 2, establish a one-page form for all recommendations, which will be sent to the office of the city clerk. Number 3, tally all recommendations in order of those receiving the most amount of recommendations, with originals of all forms being maintained in the office of city clerk. Number 4, forward the tally of the public response to the Board of Public Works, the South Bend Common Council, and the mayor within 10 days after any, the ending of the 30-day response period. Number 5, request that the Board of Public Works review all recommendations and have meaningful public dialogue at a time and place where more convenient for the general public within 30 days of the receiving the tally from advisory street renaming committee. Section 3, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to entertain any questions that the council members might have.
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. We'll turn it over to the public. If those wishing to speak in favor, please come to the podium. State your name and address.
I'm Daniel Brown. I live at 222 East Navarre Street, City of South Bend. I represent a watchdog group called Citizens United for Better Government, and I am in favor. I have talked to, uh, Mr. Scobie, and I commend him for his hard work. I have talked about this for two years, as you know, to the council, and I'm 100% behind him, and I just hope that we get it done and get it done like it should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, name and address, please.
I'm Hugh E. Scobie, of Community Actives, for the Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, Street. Um, my address is 3415 Riverside Drive, and I have protested, uh, Portage Avenue from Navarre Street to Walmart Store, and that was done in 13, December the 13th, matter of fact, of 13. And the reason for choosing that street is because it gives, uh, access to schools, businesses, residents, churches, and throughout the northwest community. And we have two city buses running out there, A and B, and it covers a lot of territory. As we know that, um, many people lost their lives because of, of, um, some of the action that was taken, uh, to get a civil rights bill and to get a voter registration rights bill. And, uh, so, as I see John Lewis, or the Reverend John Lewis, still weeping 50 years ago for how he was treated and how other blacks were treated in the community and across the country, and that is still taking place today. So for this reason, I would like Portage Avenue to be chosen as a street, whereas the city buses on the stroll, instead of it saying Portage Avenue, it would read MLK Avenue, Walmart. And again, we have four little girls who've lost their lives in a Sunday school class, and we are, again, we're covering schools, we're covering businesses, we're covering residents, and all the streets that feed into that area. It, uh, would give us a good exposure of Dr. Martin Luther King's name, uh, daily, and so that's my reason for choosing that street, and I think that we are well overdue. Dr. King deserved better than that, and I don't think there's anyone in this community would say that he doesn't deserve better, and he deserved a street whereas his name is exposed. Uh, Portage Ave, I mean, Navarre Street, that's where Portage Avenue start, but really, the city bus lights up down at the, at the bus terminal, and down at that bus terminal, it will have Dr. MLK on that stroll from the bus terminal all the way through around by Memorial Hospital until it gets reached Navarre Street. So I feel that this would be best for the community and for the city of South Bend, and, uh, I get a lot of feedback on this, and I have been working on it for several years, and I've did some research on it, and, uh, the city bus covers Elwood Street, Marquette Street, and, and like I said, runs to schools where there was problems, and it runs to business where there was problems, and it would, uh, transport people throughout the city of South Bend because they would be getting, uh, transport buses from Dr. Martin Luther King, uh, bus to Notre Dame, to all sections of the city. Also, garbage would be picked up on those streets. That it's present street, uh, there's no garbage there. There's no addresses there. I see that the bar, bar station has an address, but that's their garage address. If we look at the structure of the building, that building is facing Lincoln Way. It's the same- It's the same as the WVS. So, but the address at O two, that is where they enter their vehicles. So I would like for the council, the City of South Bend--
One minute, sir.
--to consider Fortis Avenue for Dr. Martin Luther King permanent street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of fifteen thirty-four?
Councilor Green, thirty-two seventeen Dunham Street. I'm approximately two blocks off of Western Avenue. And one day casually, I was going down Western Avenue and found out that Western Avenue's name had been changed to Chevy Chevy's. And there was no petition. The neighborhood did not know about it. We were given no recognition. What I like about this resolution and proposal is the fact that it gives organization. And you're organizing a procedure so that no one feels left out and they have a voice because there is a committee. I urge that we start to organize more of the challenges that we have in this city because everyone will have feelings. But if there's a procedure, everyone will have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of fifteen thirty-four? If you're willing to speak, you can line up behind the podium just to save a little time.
Hello, my name is Deborah Walker, and I live at six-thirty-nine Diamond Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. First of all, I'd like to say, I was the original person who helped bring in Dr. Martin Luther King that's now originally there. It was a lot of hard work. It was not an easy task. It took us five to six years just to get that small strip. And it's very emotional for me because I worked hard along with several other persons. And that was Bernie Freeman that died from a heart attack to just get that little bit of land so that we could have recognition for Dr. King. I do not want us to be slighted, first of all. That's what I have to say. So now, if you want to make additional, buy. But do not slight the people who worked to get what we got.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Bridges. And I marched on City Hall along with Dr. Martin--
Address, please.
Two-twenty-two South Dundee, South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you.
I sort of felt all the time that three little blocks was a slight, was an insult to him. It should have been something far more than that from the beginning, but something, I guess, better than nothing. But I want some clarification. I want to know if you're saying that keep the three blocks, they have an additional street, or what would you do with the three blocks you got? And explain that to me. Can you do it, sorry?
Well, ma'am, after the public portion, they'll have five minutes for rebuttal and they can address it then.
Okay. Is it, I understand if the residents don't want the street, then they could say no and you go through all of that, and the residents say no, and you still can't name the street that? Why couldn't they, when they started in the beginning? Why couldn't they have taken all of Chatham Street and made it Dr. Martin Luther King? There wasn't that many addresses on that street to change, but it would have been some. And I want to say that he does deserve far more than that. So we need more than three blocks. But if you're not going to give us another street, give us all of Chatham Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak against? Anyone wishing to speak against fifteen thirty-four? Seeing none. Petitioners, you have five minutes for rebuttal to answer Mrs. Green's question. However you want to do it, Mr. Scobie, if you want to be a part of--
Okay. In a question to that, in response to the question at this point, we really, as a petitioner, what we're saying is that the process has to be more open, that the process has to include citizens, and that, again, I think it's very clear that in regards to who makes the decision regarding Martin Luther King or any street naming in this city rests with the mayor's office and also with the Board of Public Safety. What we're saying is that the current location, the two or three blocks, that that's not adequate. We're saying that we need to look at a more profound area that would give justice to the late Dr. Martin Luther King. All of those types of discussions will come out of the committee process that will have neighborhoods and that you would be part of and that you would not have to open the newspaper and find out that a street has been renamed and you've not had the opportunity to have input. And that's what we're doing as a council. But there's a process, and that process does not rest with the council. But we're saying that we need to be part of that. We need to have community engagement. It needs to be an open, transparent process. And that we're saying that the current location, that we need to expand that. That's what we're saying. And all citizens will have a part to that. Councilwoman Davis, you want to add? Okay.
I would just, excuse me, I would just like to add that the mayor had already made a commitment to move that street from his present location, and that is recorded in the clerk's office. So that is the reason why I chose Fortis Avenue. It wasn't to slight anyone, but I had been fighting this thing like for three years. And so, but the mayor has already made a commitment. So it's left up really to the Board of Public Works and the mayor because we've already voted this thing in to move. We had an eight-to-one vote to move it from his present location. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to council.
Move for the adoption of fifteen thirty-five?
Second. Mr. Vorty?
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Furley?
Aye, good job.
And President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Take a motion on fifteen thirty-five?
Motion to continue fifteen thirty-five.
Second.
May twenty-sixth and send it back to Health and Public Safety.
Send them.
Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. First readings, Mr. Vorty, twenty-five fifteen, please.
First reading on the bill of ending the zoning ordinance and requesting a special exception for property located at eight-oh-three Washington Street, Councilman District One in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send to Area Plan?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you all. Unfinished business, really unfinished business. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, President Scott. And I'm going to also ask you, before we get to the purpose of the floor, for maybe about a fourth minute, I want to address the council about an issue that came up this past week. But before we get there, I want to get to the unfinished business part. I was out a couple of weeks ago on Taylor Street, and some of the residents were really complaining about the fact that there was like no parking for them in front of their apartments during the baseball games. This issue came up, I think I made my first year on council, my second year on council, so obviously the issue still exists. We need, I need, I want to ask for the pleasure of the council to move this conversation into maybe a committee to find out what is the exact laws as to who can park on the street in that area or if there needs to be some changes for the residents in that area when there are baseball games. I think there may be Public Works and Property Vacation Subcommittee.
I would gladly accept that at the May twenty-sixth committee. As chairman, I turn to Council Attorney Skansky. Who would it, who should be present?
Mr. Horvath or someone from the Board of Public Works. Is a residential parking permit a possibility?
Well, something that will obviously satisfy the issues that they're having right now.
May I ask that we clear that with Mr. Horvath? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Anything else, unfinished business? New business? Anything else? Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Thank you again. You're going to have, and you just bear with me really quick, you're going to have many members from this community, residents from this community are going to come during the purpose of the floor because I asked them to show up here in South Bend, to the Council meeting. I want to first say, thank you for showing up. The other part I want to offer to the councils, this past week, we had a very, I guess, passionate conversation discussion on or at Charles Black Recreational Center. Many of you may have seen it on the news. It probably appeared to be very controversial. I don't think that there was any controversy to it. I think people were just expressing their opinions. I think that's necessary. What I did find out through the entire process of this two-way street, smart street changeover as it relates to the two corridors, Western and Lincoln Way West, that the Western Avenue, and also Lincoln Way, but just we're going to stay at Western Avenue right now, did not feel as included or should have been included in more of the discussion points that were talked about. Meaning, the information that has been written out, the information that has been recorded per the hundred-and-thirty-four, thirty-two-page report, I'm probably off by a couple of numbers, did not suggest or give a clear insight to exactly what the residents were asking for. If we could think back a few years, this council passed a resolution, and I do not remember the number of the resolution, but it was myself, Oliver Davis, and the Council member White to begin the process of redefining what development looks like or redeveloping Lincoln Way and Western Avenue corridor. This council passed this bill through unanimously. It was even associated with dollars. So this council led the charge to begin the redevelopment of those two corridors. As it stands, that those corridors are still not developed like we would like to see them, but the process is actually happening. The residents are expressing that property taxes are now looking to be going up or are going up. Vacant lots are not being developed. There is still a lack of commercial and retail development in those areas. The street changes versus enhancement. The enhancement part was is that they were just looking for clear and proper striping on the street. If the curb line needed to be redefined or reintroduced to the area, please do so, and also sidewalks, as well as lighting in that area. Those were basic concepts and basic standards that any neighborhood should want. And that is all what the residents were asking for. They weren't asking for any streets to be shortened or changed of or anything like that. They were just asking for the basics. Lighting, upgrade to the infrastructure, and the other things I just named off. The meetings that they were a part of were not beneficial because, again, they felt like their voices were not being heard. Meaning that if they said red, the consultant would say blue. They would say purple, the consultant would say pink. And so that is where the frustration lies. This is not a black against brown situation. Let me repeat that again. This is not a black against brown situation, Latino against African-American. That's not the issue. The issue is about inclusiveness and being included at the table, making sure your voice is being heard properly so that when you see the document that you can say, well, yeah, we talked about that and that's what we wanted. And so, at the end of the day, the concerns of the residents in that area, be as it may shift from individual to individual, are clearly not being met with this particular project. And I'm asking the council to not only intervene in this process once again because we started it, but to restart the conversation so that the residents that are here will feel like or will understand and do know that this body is supporting them. And I think that that is what we do owe to the residents of this community and to make sure that they are getting what they pay for.
Okay. Anybody else with new business? All right, privilege of the floor. This is a time where you can come and speak on any topic except what was on the current agenda. You have three minutes. Councilman Derek Dieter, or I'm sorry, Kevin Furley will time you and give you an extra warning. This is to where you're speaking to the council, not the other members in the audience?
This is, uh, privilege of the floor.
Privilege of the floor, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Almost there. And it's not for council to make comment or answer questions. We will listen to your concerns.
Yes, I know.
And I'm just making clear to everybody.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now you can go.
I'm Councilor Green, thirty-two seventeen Dunham, South Bend, Indiana. I am the president of the Far West Side Neighborhood Association, which affects about six thousand neighborhood people in that area. And one of our borders is Western Avenue. I also have five or six pieces of property on the other side of Western Avenue to Washington Street. My concern is a lack of transparency of the whole process. I agree with Councilman Davis, this is not a racial issue. But a lot of times, when there's only a dime and there's the interest of two different groups of people, it will appear that there is interfighting. This neighborhood asked for what was said, you know, safety, better curving, streets, et cetera. I was at several meetings, none of the issues that the African-American neighborhood from the Sail Park to the Far West Side asked for were approached in this here document. Rumors came out that they were going to put up a three-block soccer field extending Charles Black Center. They were putting up townhouses. People's homes were being taken. I do recognize that when there's revitalization, there is also relocation. But the block of the relocation and revitalization should not be affected negatively on the established community of the Sail Park. So I'm asking the council to reconsider, stop the process altogether until all of the different interest groups can have additional input and, as the city engineer said, re-quit it because he left out many things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Once again, my name is Samuel Brown. I live at two-two-two East Navarre Street, City of South Bend. And I represent a Washington group called Citizens United for Better Government. Since we've taken out a thousand houses in so many days, we are leaving these areas to prove. I was talking to a press conference, I think it was Young Johnson and Fosnight, and the sidewalk, the bottles, the trash, who cleans that up? I mean, it's the killer. You take the house down, the neighbor's swimming pool, you don't even double it off. You got rocks, bowls, everything. Sidewalk, you got glass. You out there and you clean yourself. Don't take my word. We deserve better than that. We deserve better because I know what neighborhood they're in. Now you got them to code enforcement. You took the house down, but you didn't do no cleanup. And the person that took the house down don't have no ties to South Bend because I know where contractor and where they're from. So we need to get on our jobs and get that taken care of. So I'll be out here looking, you know? So that's what I do.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please.
Charlotte Bridges, two-twenty-two South Dundee. I just feel sort of angry because they come out to the center and we have these meetings and we tell them what we want and we're paying for it. Today, I paid taxes on six properties. We're paying for this. Why are you not listening to what we want? Since we're the ones who got to pay for this, we should be heard. We asked, we told them, we don't want no bike lanes up and down Western Avenue. You can barely get on there and pass anything now. So when you put the bike lanes down there--
So when you put the bike lanes down there, you leave me nothing to do but drive in the back, bike lanes, and then I wind up getting a ticket. You got bike lanes on, uh, whole facts and orange, bike lanes everywhere. Every street don't need a bike lane.
And there's wheels.
Right. They don't, they don't, they not riding no bikes up and down Western Avenue. So I feel like, we pay for this, you should be listening to what we want in our community, not what somebody else want us to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address.
Jessica Davis, P.O. Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I talked with Councilman Scott before the meeting, so some of this was already covered. But I'm coming tonight with the privilege of the floor, and several old privileges of the floors attached, that really have not been addressed over a few-year period, actually. Um, and even some of them that were addressed, really not satisfactory answers given. Um, so, along with the privilege of the floor and the old ones, we can revert back to them, I also have a list here with, uh, seven of the topics and the questions that were kind of involved in these, and, uh, what the answers were that were really asked for that we were never, never given. And, uh, I'll just give this to Mr. Vorty.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next, name and address, please.
Sam Centheas, I, uh, work at 746 Mead Street on the corner of Mead and Dunham. I represent, uh, La Casa de Amistad, the Latin American Chamber of Commerce as well. And I wanted to speak on the Western Avenue plan. Uh, since the meeting on Thursday, we've actually had a really great opportunity to, to start additional dialogue on the long-term parts of the plan. We had a great meeting this morning with about 20 people added at the West Side Democratic Club, where most of the things that people want short-term, curbs, sidewalks, uh, better, better lighting, uh, a more improved look to Western Avenue, that's what's going to come in this first year. And so, I do think we need to have some more conversations about that long-term, right? What does the park expansion look like? What does, you know, the, some of the different blocks we were looking at, and really go block by block. Because those long-term plans, I was part of the, the steering committee, those long-term plans were, was a visioning process of what it could look like. And so, decisions haven't been made, block by block, on what's going to happen. And so, I think we, we can start some of the processes that are in place for construction work this summer, that's already meeting the needs of, of what people want. Everybody agreed this morning, we want better striping on the street, we want better curbs, we want better lighting. That's what's coming in the summer of 2015, if we stay on track. I think where there are a lot of questions about what's going to happen with the proposed plaza, with the proposed fields, and park expansion, and that's got a ways to go, and we can continue to have those conversations. Um, and I encourage those conversations, and I will be a part. I, I attended the meeting this morning, I will be at the follow-up meeting that we're having this Thursday, and I encourage all common council members to, to attend. Um, we even, like, we talked about bike lanes this morning. The last thing I did want to mention, um, as a former member of the Diversity Utilization Board for this city, I do really want to encourage that as the city puts this project out to bid, um, that we look at, what is the makeup of the contractors that we're hiring? Uh, are they local? Who are they employing? Uh, are there minority contractors that can do the work, that could sell some of the work? Uh, we, we've worked a lot over the last couple of years to try to make some improvements in that area, so that the city is working to spend our tax dollars as well on people who live and work in this community. And so, I, I'm not only pushing for us to continue this summer work, but to try to also make sure that we're employing, um, our community, um, as part of that work, and that we then continue conversations on the long-term plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
President Scott.
Don't be shy.
President Scott.
Hi, my name is Noshia.
Wait a minute, ma'am, please.
Before we go into the adjournment part, I want to ask you a question about how do we proceed? So, just don't go ahead and take the vote.
Okay. No vote, but we'll...
Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Your time starts now.
Hi, hi, hi. My name is Noshia Casey. I live at 1902 North Fremont Street. I represent Fremont Park Youth Foundation. I'm here as privileged to the floor to talk about two different subjects. One subject is about what you guys are doing with Lincolnway. The next subject is what, what's going on with the parks? We're not starting to see no upgrades. First thing, um, with the streets, are they really taking in how they're doing these streets? Are they really taking in what lights they took down? Certain streets are busier than other streets, like Johnson is busier than other streets. It's more dangerous coming out of that light without a light there. Um, if you look at, like, if you go down by Sam's, Full Mart, Londo, that's the easier street to come out. They got a light there, one of the lights you don't even use because it's a one, it's a, it's a one-way that goes this way. You're not allowed to come there this way, but it's a light setting there. So, are they really looking at which lights they're taking down? Are they really looking at the safety issues of going down Lincolnway and how far of distance they're doing with these, with these different type of renovations? So that's one thing. The, the, we, we agree on it needs new striping. We agree on that it needs curbs. We agree on, you guys need to come and actually look and see what you really need to get, take care of in the neighborhoods. You guys agreed on this, and you guys haven't did anything about it. Um, the second thing I want to talk about is Fremont Park. Recently, they were over there taking down brush and trees on a fence, and they only took down a certain area between the basketball court. Then they didn't even come back and clean up half the trees that they took down. They left dirt and things over the grass to where now, if the grass looked like dirt and this mud, and it was gr, pretty grass growing right there, which makes our park look like we don't care about our park. And then, right, only right in front of the basketball, if you guys are going to clear the fence and the brushes and the trees from the fence for safety reasons, why didn't go all the way down the fence for the whole park and not just that center area? Um, we have been talking about the splash pad and trying to get that, we're not hearing anything back. We're not knowing if we're going to actually get these upgrades. Was this just, were we, were we just coming up here and voicing our opinion, and then it's just getting said on the back burner, just like things going on with Lincolnway and Western? Um, are, are we going to get these parked, like, we got a park bench that was folded over because of the snow, the heaviness of the snow, and the street department's coming to shovel the snow. I mean, the street department coming to shovel the snow, and the park bench is bent over and it's still left like that. The snow has melted months ago. Nobody's came out there to, to put in new park benches, nobody has came out there to fix anything. Same with Kennedy Park. We're really standing behind our parks and we're not going away. And like I said, I represent Fremont Park Youth Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Collier, 4900 West Washington Street, South Bend, Indiana. I'm advocating on behalf of myself, um, quality of life concerns, um, senior citizens and education. I attended the meeting that the gentleman spoke of, um, and I agree with him. We really don't understand what has been voted on. I was at the council meeting, um, several months ago perhaps, when Henry Davis tried to suggest to you, uh, areas of concern that were overlooked, but, um, he was kind of demonized and it was kind of brushed over and it was passed, but that's okay. Um, we feel that we can disagree disagreeably, and thank you for that. And we appreciate all the efforts that's going into the Western Avenue and Lincolnway West projects. Um, what we need to understand real good is how many parts to the project is there? And yes, the cart got in front of the horse when it came to demolition of homes for the soccer field, which has not even come up for conversation yet. I think we can understand a little bit better the steps and the process, and where we are at this point in time, and kind of just give us a clearer vision of your vision for us. Um, we're going to have a meeting Thursday at the Charles Black Center, and it's going to be civil. Um, we are civil, we want to be involved, we want to help, we want a good quality of life too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, sir, could I, um, please address the fact of transparency that all people that was on the steering committee was not invited to this meeting to have that discussion? That is why we're having the problems now, is the transparency of the home. I was unaware of the meeting this today, or Thursday, maybe half of the people in this room was not aware. So consequently, certain people were brought to the table. But the neighborhoods were not brought to the table. That's the issue of transparency.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Henry?
Yeah, President Scott, and I was, actually, she took it right on my mouth. I guess this is what I'm saying to my brain. I'm going to ask that the CI Committee, or Community Investment, because that's where it originated at, takes over those community meetings that we're talking about, so that those, that information is not only being, um, laid by the council, but also being recorded by the clerk's office, so that there's greater transparency about what's being talked about, who's talking about what, and who's saying what, and what is the outcome. We can't just have it, all of these meetings about something, somebody agreeing on this, somebody agreeing on that, and then the project continues moving forward, when the consensus of the people, we're all confused. So I'm going to ask that the CI Committee, maybe the CI Committee can even be a part of that, we'll call the meeting for Thursday at the Charles Black, so they, we are there as a council, and so we can participate, because that is what's needed. It's not, it's not doing it separately, it's doing it together.
Okay. And the other thing is, we'll make sure we get the word out about that meeting, time and place.
Well, I'm, but I'm asking for the committee itself, not us get the word out, but make sure that it goes to the committee session.
I'm just saying on the, the Thursday meeting.
Sure. So Gavin, are you interested in, in chairing the meeting for that particular day at that particular time?
Sure. I'm actually out of town at a conference, but I would love to coordinate with, uh, Scott Vorty, and I'll find out who the assistant chair of my committee is and see if they're viable. But if nothing else, I'll make sure Scott publishes it as a community investment meeting.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We'll go back, is there one more for, go ahead. Name and address, please, Gavin.
My name is William B. Johnson. I live at 5203 Floro Place, South Bend, Indiana. Uh, I was at the meeting this morning, which I do agree with, uh, Ms. Green, you do need transparency, so that, so that the public knows exactly what's going on. You don't leave anybody out. That way, you, you don't have any rebuttals, you know, after the meeting goes about. But, uh, this morning, we had a, a pretty productive meeting, because we were all agreeable on things that we needed done. There's, there's things on Western Avenue that I don't understand how they happen, but I don't want to go back and re-hatch all of that out. There's pinch points that won't let the traffic flow. First of all, lines haven't been painted on Western Avenue in three years. You've got, it's like, uh, when you go down Western Avenue, it's like, uh, a video game. It is, it's like a video game. If you aren't watching what you're doing, somebody will smash into you. Now, we, we, the, the suggestion came up about a middle turn lane. Now, I'm a driver, that's what I do for a living. I know on all the streets that I've seen with middle turn lanes, people will come out into the middle turn lane to merge into traffic, and sit there, and nobody can turn, and, and it's, it's a dangerous situation. Now, with, I, I know we have to make upgrades, and I want to have that, I want to see that. I want to see Western Avenue be a productive area for retail, for the residents. But we don't want to rush into this thing. We want to take our time, hack it out, get with the residents, let everybody know what's going on. Transparency, trust, and people will do whatever you need done. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Motion for adjournment?
Some of them.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. No one's got my screen, will they?